I know, right? Like the total common sense that so far has eluded us a little recently.
Hey, council, please indicate when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Everyone ready? Okay. We'll call the meeting to order, regular city council meeting for December 19, 2023. My apologies, I've got the seasonal allergies, so I'm A-febrile, meaning I have no temperature. And I had my COVID and flu vaccines some time ago, so. And I just run into other people who are suffering from the same thing, so all is good. Wow, thank you for the decorations, this is very festive. Looks great. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, every nation, every American, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamos.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you, now we'll move on to report on closed session confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, your council convened an open session to ascertain if there were any public comments on the matters agendized for closed session consideration. After being informed that there were no public comments, you adjourned to closed session at 5:00 PM and concluded your closed session at 6:28 PM. With respect to each of the matters of existing litigation and anticipated litigation, I will do a written report upon return from closed session consistent with government code section 5497.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from councilmembers?
No, sir.
So, you're not taking Mr. Ross? Move on to proclamation and presentations, there are none this evening, and we're on to public items. I know it's not on closed session, do we have any? Anyone from the public wishing to come?
I do, Mayor Garcia, I have Richard Cifuentes.
Oh, wow. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the American Canyon City Council and the community at large, thank you on behalf of the American Canyon Youth Football Junior Wolves and CHEER. We thank you for having us out here this evening. Just wanted to take a few moments to recognize the achievement, the efforts of our 8U Junior Wolves team. Not too long ago, we stood up here, having won a national championship in Las Vegas, national tournament that's been in existence for 50 years. It was the first opportunity for our 8U squad in quite some time to bring home some trophy hardware. It was a great, great season, it was a dream season, and we were fortunate enough to be able to carry on that momentum with not only some of our returning players, but a large portion of new players to the sport. As a result, we went back to Vegas and we brought home some more hardware.
All right.
We were able to achieve. Our 8U squad was able to achieve back-to-back national championship status, and again, we wanted to take the time to celebrate and recognize these players who put in a lot of hard work, a lot of hours, starting even in the spring, with weekend camps going into the summer, full five days a week, Monday through Friday, before we went to three days a week when school started, played 13 games. And I'll tell you, every one of our, every one of these players has grown tremendously as both a player and a person, and I, for one, I think it speaks to the exceptional program we have with American Canyon Youth Football and CHEER. Definitely, it's, it cements the status of American Canyon being not just a baseball town, but definitely a healthy football town as well, and we look forward to being able to continue this tradition for years to come. Once again, it's truly an honor to be a part of this organization. I've been with them for about eight years now, and my son is long since aged out of the program, but it's such a strong program and a great community that it's a no-brainer to come back and help teach, you know, continuing generations of players this sport that I love and would like to obviously continue to be part of our future. So, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out here tonight and supporting us, and as always, go Wolves!
Congratulations.
Can we get a photo with you?
We want a photo.
Yes, yeah, definitely, yeah, players, if you want to come up single file line, let's take a picture with the mayor and the city council, please.
Thank you, Wachir.
Well, congratulations and look forward to more success. Well, well.
That group in Vegas, man.
About to think American Canyon without achievement, wow, that is awesome. We're still on public comment?
We are, Mayor Garcia, I have Sherry Tennyson.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Sherry.
Evening, welcome.
Which one is this, it's this one, right? It's been a while. I'm Dr. Sherry Tennyson, it's my honor to be with you all tonight. It's the holiday season, as you know, Toys for Tots is well under its way, we are hitting 155 families, helping them with toys this year, and I want to do a special shout-out because it's not one person, not one agency, it's a village, right Fran? It's always about our community. So I want you to know that I, from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you to several folks, and I want you also to know that Pierre made me come up here. Thank you to the following, because it is a village. Thank you to the American Canyon Fire Department, they are the ones who run Toys for Tots, Captain Max, he's the one that makes sure toys are coming to me when I'm begging. This year, we're partnering with Salvation Army. Wonderful opportunity to work with folks in Napa, to be part of this wonderful Napa County program. Obviously, the Family Resource Center, even though we're not brick and mortar anymore, this is one program we've handled since 2006, and we're going to keep handling it, that's my promise to this community. And of course, one thing, my other hat that I wear is Napa Valley College, and very happy to tell you that many of our students are graduates, and their children, and our professors are partnering with us to make sure that those bags are packed. It does take a community. I think one of the harder things, I think I will make that announcement here, the Family Resource Center will continue in a very, very limited way, I'm hoping we can get our tax program going this year, our Toys for Tots program in the fall. I'm scaling back my hours at Napa Valley College because I'm moving on, pach! January 8, I will be starting my new job with an organization that works with foster and adopted families, and my role is their Director of Training and Education, which means it's full-time, and my time won't be here as much, and I have to tell you, it's making me kind of sad saying that to all of you, and I still have 45 seconds. So it's a pleasure in my way, I hope that we continue to see each other, I just know I won't be able to see you as much, and it's been a while since I've been on this podium. So, thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for your service for the community. You know, I think there's countless numbers of kids and families that you've helped over the years, so thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I have no other cards, I do have a hand raised online. I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Well, I want to shout, my name is, sorry, my name is Justin Hall, and I'm from Rankin, 38 years, and I want to just shout out our Dr. Sharon, she's in the room. She's a very hard worker, and she worked in Napa College, get ready for the job fair. Right now, I am permanent job right now at the blow glass company, so Marjorie, I think you're very like your windows, so Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have no other hands raised.
Okay, very, very good, we'll close public comment this time, move on with our agenda item. Agenda changes, we have consent calendar, council, if there are no items to be pulled for discussion, I will accept a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Motion's second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, council.
Moving on with our agenda this evening, public hearings are in on this evening, we'll move on to business side of solid waste hauling and disposal.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is an informational item tonight, talking about the agreement we have with Recology American Canyon for the hauling of solid waste and recyclables and compost, and with us tonight, we also have Derek Nelson, who's available to answer any questions you might have. We originally began this agreement back in 2003, and it's been extended a variety of times, and comes up for extension originally at the end of this month, we've entered into a very short agreement for another couple of months to extend the contract while we enter into a new agreement with Recology, and the negotiations of that agreement are still ongoing, but what we wanted to do is to come to council tonight and just kind of share some of where we are with the new agreement, and that's what shows up in, I believe it's attachment 1 in the staff report. Recology did a nice job of taking the old agreement, again, which was fairly old actually, and taking it, getting it modernized, and a lot of cleanup language was added to it, and so we'll have a contemporary version of that agreement that we'll bring back to the council sometime in the first quarter of next year. The staff report outlines some of the high points where we are with the current negotiations, and the first kind of place that we're in is to kind of summarize the fact that we're not proposing to do any kind of a formal RFP or a process where we might bring on a new vendor, and that staff recommendation to continue with Recology stems from a couple of sources, but it's kind of the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. What we've heard from the community is they appreciate Recology services, they've done a good job, and they do it at a competitive rate. We went so far as to look at what others are paying, surrounding communities of ours, and that's what shows up in attachment 2 to the staff report, and kind of outlines that we think it's a competitive price already, and that would kind of defeat the purpose if you already have a competitive price, there's not necessarily reason to go out for another competitive price unless maybe you had issues with service, for example, or what have you. We did an informal poll of the community this past fall, you know, it wasn't a scientific survey necessarily, but we queried the community and asked what they thought about Recology, and, you know, generally 4.2 stars out of 5, so in our world, that's pretty good, and it was just another piece of evidence, and probably what was even more kind of evidence was, even though we had the poll open for about three and a half weeks, we only had 22 survey respondents, which isn't a large number necessarily, but that also, I think in this case demonstrates that this issue is in front of mind with a lot of folks. If, I think if people were upset about this service, they would have taken the opportunity to tell us, whether it be that poll or in any other form. We do see Recology out in the community quite a bit, I think it's a testament to Derek and his team how much engagement they do, me in the street and other events, and I'm certain if he hears about service issues, he gets them addressed because they're not coming our way, and they're not coming, at least to my knowledge, to the council's way, so, you know, from time to time, we have heard, you know, little issues about street sweeping and things, which is a service they provide to us, but those generally get addressed as well, so the core service around the hauling haven't had a lot of issues, so that's the other kind of data point that we're using to say, it probably just makes sense to extend Recology rather than go out because we're not sure we'd beat the price and we're not sure we'd beat the service, so, you know, there isn't a big, this field, this service provision, there aren't a big group of competitors out there, it's not like there's two dozen folks who are lining up to try and go out there, it's a pretty small field to begin with, so all those kind of points lead to staff's recommendation to continue on. The next aspect of continuing on would be the duration of the agreement. You know, we started out with talking about a five-year agreement, and we've also been talking to Recology about a 10-year agreement, and the staff recommendation is, we certainly want feedback from council on this, we'd initially said, well, maybe a five-year, we'll check out what the landscape looks like in five years, but we're now leaning towards saying maybe a 10-year actually would be more appropriate, we know it would have some benefit for Recology, they have some investments they want to make in American Canyon, and to be able to spread those investments out over a longer period would be helpful, but it also provides some certainty to the community about who their provider is going to be, and again, knowing that they're going to have the same provider they've been happy with for a period of time, for, to have that certainty over the next decade, it really, I think, provides some value, so, you know, as we start to add homes and add customers, in Watson Ranch in particular, it's actually going to change up a little bit the way that the Recology is having to operate, it's going to be an additional residential route, it's going to be additional sort of paradigm for them, particularly as that area builds out, so they're going to be needing to make some investments in vehicles and personnel, and, you know, we think a 10-year agreement kind of makes more sense. We didn't want to start there with the council, and we didn't want to kind of come right out of the gate there, but when you kind of line up all these things, that was the, that's where staff's perspective is on it at the moment. The other items, you know, that kind of listed here, 1 through 15, I wasn't planning on going through all of them, but it's, you know, pretty status quo, we're taking the opportunity to refine some of the language and get rid of some of the old language, the old programs we're not even doing anymore, and put the very contemporary services in there. You know, certainly there's been a lot of new service provided around compost, particularly organics that was required by state legislation, SB 1383 was a monumental change that we went through about a year ago now, and was required under state law, so they've been a great partner, Recology has, as we try and navigate those waters, and everybody in the state of California is trying to navigate what their 1083 means for everybody, but we're certainly more robust on our composting and our diversions of organics, and they've been a major, major part of that, so that's all continuing, and there's the benefits there of the compost being available for our residents and for city programs. One of the things that we're going to take advantage of the opportunity to, moving forward, is to really integrate our communications team with their communications team so that we can kind of time our communications and avoid the oversaturation, but also have really a cohesive message. More and more, you know, particularly after SB 1383, more and more of the relationship with the city and its hauler and its diverters have to be in line with what we're doing, and so we're not doing it ourselves, these aren't city employees, but to some extent they are, really have to be integrated with what we're doing, we have to know what they're doing, we have to communicate and vice versa, so we plan to have some more robust strategies, working with our communications team and their communications team, and connecting with the residents, and this is on the prospective things, not complaint-driven issues, we're talking about programs, when they're available, pickups, how do you do those things, FAQs, what are their newsletters saying, what are our newsletters saying, that sort of thing, so you'll hopefully see some more of that. You know, other than, again, what was in the staff report and some of the red lines here, our plan is to get back with Recology after the holiday and put a final agreement together, and then bring it to council, like I said, in the first quarter, we're kind of assuming that the council is in the same place with where we are, and absent any major changes or any major different ideas, you know, we'd be happy to incorporate those, but one other piece I wanted to ask about, very early on in this process, we began looking at a program that Recology runs in San Francisco, it's a program known as the Artist in Residency Program, it's a pretty, well, it is a unique program, and it's where artists come and take recyclable materials and make art out of it, and it's a way of, you know, making something beautiful out of something that was discarded, so the idea is to potentially have something like this over at the ECO Center if and when that project eventually comes forward. That's still a little ways out, and so it's a little, at this point, a little premature to put the exact program in this contract, because we don't know when that's going to happen, and we don't know how that program would look in American Canyon, we're still kind of ferreting it out, but what we are planning to add is, would characterize as reopener language, so if and when that program is to come forward, there would be some rate implications, there would be some costs involved for that new service. Assuming the council wants to do it at that point when the program's been better defined, and we know the ECO Center's there, we know what kind of program we're talking about, we would go through a process of looking at the rate structure, being able to cover that service, and then we would reopen the contract just for that purpose, we're not talking about reopening the whole contract, it would just be a way of putting an amendment together to address that program if and when all those other pieces fall together. We don't know whether that's two years, three years, five years, or if ever, so it was a little premature to try and put something hard and fast in this agreement for that, but we're looking at adding some reopen language, you don't see that in red line form just yet, but the final agreement would have that. And, other than that, happy to answer any questions, certainly want the council's feedback if there's any issues you think we've missed.
Mr. Joseph, is this him? The councilmember Joseph.
Yes, well, thank you for the report. For the most part, I just wanted to provide a little historical perspective, every once in a while, I'll have to do that. In terms of the RFP process back in 2003, I was the city manager at the time, and I think the mayor was on the council at the time, and without going into a lot of detail, suffice it to say, it was an incredibly long, drawn-out process. It ended up great for the city, but boy, was it a lot of time, so, you know, unless the, you know, given the fact that this is a program that provides great service, that our rates are lower than everybody but Fairfield, the odds of getting a better deal versus the amount of energy you or your staff are going to have to deal with for the next two years, I'd stick with what we've got. The second point is, many years ago, we used to do a water bill survey once, I think once a year, and one of the questions was, you know, how to rate your services, and police and fire was always in the top because they're police and fire, but solid waste services were right up there in the top three, and having come from Fresno, it was not normal for people to sing the praises of our wastewater company, or our solid waste company, so to the point of they've always provided a good level of service, that's a historical trend, I guess. The last thing I would throw out, and I agree, maybe a 10-year proposal makes more sense given the circumstances, and hopefully that'll give us some leverage when the time comes if we do that opener with the Artist in Residency. The last thing, just a little picky thing, now that we have the Napa Junction Community Center, I think we need to make sure we add that location on the list of places that get their parking lots swept, and I'd like to ask an extra recycling bin be added to the equation, because part of that is the new food pantry for Kiwanis, and they will go through a lot of cardboard, so admittedly, it's a little self-serving because I'm on the board of the Kiwanis Club, but if we could add those items, that would be good, and other than that, I look forward to working out something and getting it approved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that present, for the update on that, Jason, and for Derek, I just wanted to let you know that you've done an awesome job, not only just from a Recology standpoint, but just being a partner for our city. I've noticed you at all of our, you know, community events, your face is really known in the community, so it tells me that you take your job serious and you have that passion, so I just want to say I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much all I wanted to say, I wanted to say that I just appreciate your.
Thank you.
Availability, you're a great ambassador for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abadamos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Jason, for the update. I just have a quick question, I'm looking at number 4A for the bulky waste collection, it says that it's been changed from two cubic yards to 1,000 pounds at a designated disposal site, does that mean that we no longer can get that, those two pickups a year for huge bulky items, we actually have to transport them somewhere?
You want to talk about that, one of those details of that?
First off, thank you all for, you know, the kind words, and it means the world to Recology to be a partner with American Canyon, and Mr. Holly, thank you for, you know, the introduction. As far as the bulky items, this is an additional program, so we still will do the bulky item collection at your doorstep, but this is previously in the contract, people, we would have like a period of time that would open up, that you can bring two cubic yards to our facility, and it was only during like a small window of time, so what we're doing is expanding that to where it's year-round, we're going to get two coupons a year in addition to the, at the home bulky pickup, and we will, you can take that to Devlin Road Transfer Station, give them the coupon, and then we pay the bill on the disposal.
Thank you so much, I thought we were losing that, and for me, one of the perks of that is for you guys to come to my house because I don't have a truck.
Yes, so no, we still will do that as well.
And I also wanted to say, Vice Mayor Washington commended you, but I also wanted to say that Recology's always been a great partner at American Canyon even since, since before you came on board, so thank you guys for your partnership.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, I have a question, listen, I'm totally fine with the services, I think you do great, you guys rarely miss a beat, if at all, and I have on my calendar when street sweeping is, so I try to get all my neighbors to get out the driveway, so I did have a question, last time we talked about the Artist in Residence program, and you and I had a conversation about it with Janelle Selig, and what's your vision for that, and how do we make sure that doesn't, that opportunity doesn't go away?
I think what Mr. Holly said was kind of spot-on, there would be a rate impact with that, because we would hire a director of the program, similar to Ms. Monk who we spoke with, with Janelle, and there would be other artist cost, I believe there would be a lease of the space in the ECO Center, so there's some expenses that we would have to pass on through the rates with that. As Mr. Holly said, we're going to have language in the contract that we can open it up at any time to incorporate that, but if we did it now, it wouldn't be fair to the rate payers to pay for it now when we wouldn't implement the program until the ECO Center is up and running and, you know, ready for an Artist in Residence program.
So, we're going to add that into the language then, so we can revisit that at a later time?
Yeah, what you will see when we bring back the final agreement, and we'll highlight it for you in the staff report, you will see a section that reads something like, once we figure out what that program's actually going to be for American Canyon, the cost, we go through the rate process, then Recology agrees to implement it.
Thank you.
In lawyer language.
And we love partnering with the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation, and we want to see the ECO Center, you know, breathe life into it, and would be happy to support it with that Artist in Residence program.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'd just like to weigh in as well, I think, you know, 4.2 out of 5 is a good rating, really appreciate the quality of the work you provide, the service you provide for the city, and certainly, folks. And certainly folks do notice your presence at events in American Canyon. So thank you for being attentive.
And it's always a pleasure to see you guys at those events as well.
As Councilmember Joseph mentioned, in 2003, I was newly elected in 2002, and it was my first council meeting. And I'm the rookie. And of course, the issue is the waste management contract. Oh, we have two council members want this company and two council members want Recology. And Councilmember Garcia, what is your voice? How do you vote? Well, I just needed a little more information and time, but we finally ended up with a contract. But that was just, that's me, geez, do I feel on the spot? Oh, God, yes. Yeah, it was a tight moment. New learning curve. But I think by and large, I think the service is very well appreciated. You and I had a little brief conversation there at the Son Association Realtors installation the other evening. I think that's where it was, or another, a lot of things were going, we ended up together on plastics. Yeah. And I did just see a piece in the letter to the newspaper, editor in the newspaper on plastic recycling. So if you could speak to a little bit of that as well, how we handle that.
Yeah. So plastic recycling is a, it's a delicate, as a matter of fact, I was at another meeting, a solid waste authority meeting down south, learning more about plastics as well. And there's a lot of confusion around plastics. Not all plastics are good plastics. Not all of them are easily recyclable. Plastics number one and two, number one is PET. It's like the drinkable plastic water bottle that you'd get at Costco or something like that. And number two is HDPE, which is like a high density plastic that, it's like a Tide bottle, a milk jug. Those are the two most popularly or easily recyclable plastics. Once you start getting through the three and down, like I believe three is like a PVC pipe. It's a brittle pipe. There's a lot of chemicals in it, and it's not easily recycled. There's a lot of communities that don't allow those in their recycling program because there's not a market for them. It's difficult for the manufacturers that do the downstream recycling and processing to break those down and reuse them into, you know, into other types of plastics. So in our facility, we capture the number one, the number two, number five, which is like the, if you go to Costco and buy a rotisserie chicken and there's that black plastic kind of plate, we capture those. We also do mixed rigid plastics. So a lot of the water jugs that you guys use in the water reclamation program have come from our Murph because that's a mixed rigid plastic that we take. And we set those aside specifically so that we can put those back out in the community for the recycled water program. You know, like milk crates and those other kind of mixed rigid plastics, those are things that we still capture. There was a treaty that a lot of countries in the world have adopted called the Basel Convention, where they've refused to start sending a lot of what's been deemed as trash to these third world countries. And then they would pick through that, or not really trash, but these mixed recycling. And it had a lot of the low grade plastics that couldn't be recycled. And they would just kind of farm out plastic number one, plastic number two. And the rest of that stuff would end up as pollution and litter and, you know, in the waterways. And so Recology was an early adopter, like the United States hasn't adopted the Basel Convention, but there's countries all around the world that have. And Recology is an early adopter of that program because, you know, we want to do what's right for the country.
Thank you. So you have a place at the facility, is that the Vallejo facility?
I'm sorry?
Location for the recycle plastic?
Yes. So we, yeah, right here at 2021 Broadway in Vallejo, we receive about 80 tons of commingled recycle a day and sort through it and ship it out to different recyclers around the world.
All right. So if we want to collect it and dispose of it properly, then we can come to the Broadway facility.
Yes. So we have Thursday through Saturday, 8 to 3, it's open to the public. And that's also where, you know, in this new amendment, residents will be able to go and pick up compost. There's a mini household hazardous waste, which we call a BOPA, which we take batteries, oil, paint, antifreeze, light bulbs and those kind of things, mattresses, any extra recycling that you have, you can take it there as well.
Very good. Thank you for providing that. Anything further from council? So this is more of an update. We look more for.
I think there may be some public comment.
Public comment?
I really enjoy the recycling. And I have three, the three bins. But I'm concerned with the bin for the food because there's a lot of bugs. Every time I open it, bugs fly out. Is there a solution for that? I don't want to put poison spray in there or whatever.
So there are solutions. So just to give you some more context and something else that we're adding, because I, you know, I've heard through the grapevine, you were also concerned about the size of the carts.
It's big, yeah.
And so that's something that's in this contract as well, that we're going to have the option for 32 gallon, 64 and 96 gallon organic carts, so that you won't have the giant cart. But the biggest thing is putting it out regularly. You know, some people, because it is a 96 gallon cart, don't feel the need to roll their cans out every single week. And so that can cause, you know, more bugs, you know. At my house, I did an experiment because I just wanted to see the impact that the community would experience as well. And so I just kept loading it up with food and didn't take it out. And it got nasty, you know.
No way to describe it, yes.
It was at least like a couple of months. Because it's a big can, you know. Yeah, I got.
I've got, I've got two weeks.
I got a pretty good sized backyard. And it was also in the winter seasons. It was like, you know, last winter. And so I could imagine during the summer, it would have been much worse. And so I think that's why I was able to go so long. But there's a lot of, you know, essential oils. There's different essential oils that you can mist on it that bugs don't like, that wouldn't impact the compost. You know, some of the things that we recommend are like freezing it. Like some people might just put all their food scraps somewhere, put it in a deep freezer and then just dump it in on service day. You'll have zero odor.
I might try that. The other question I have is, I get plastics from, say, like glacamoly, you know, those kind of thin plastics. And it's hard to see a number on them. Do they just take any of those? Because some of them I know you don't take.
Yeah. So plastic bags and film plastics is what they're called, are single use plastics. And there's actually some like statewide legislation that may be coming down regarding single use plastics and like banning them. There's not a lot of market for reuse. We can't accept them in our facility because they get tangled up in like the gears and the equipment, and it causes a lot of downtime. And so even if there is a number one or number two on it, we can't, it's not acceptable in the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
I do, I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. One moment. Justin, go ahead.
I can't. My name is Justin Hole. I live in American Canyon. My question is, already had a garbage day on Christmas, Christmas Day.
That's a very good question, and it's a common question. So no, Christmas Day is on a Monday. So all of the Monday customers will be serviced on Tuesday. Tuesday customer service on Wednesday. And the service will just cascade throughout the week with Friday being collected on Saturday.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
That's a point of interest. Part of our joint public outreach, maybe communicating some of those things.
Doesn't that also trigger New Year's Day as well?
Yes. So New Year's will be the same thing. So there's three days in a year. It's Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's where that occurs.
Okay. Anybody else online?
I do. I have a number that I'm not familiar with.
Hello?
Hi. Go ahead, please, and please state your name.
Oh, hi, everyone. This is Janelle. Janelle Selig with the American Canyon Community and Parks Foundation. I just wanted to jump in and just, you know, for one, really thank Derek and his team at Recology. They do do a lot for the community. And we really echo everyone's sentiment about seeing them around town and sponsoring so many community events. So feeling like they're really truly invested in the community above and beyond what they're contractually obligated to. And then beyond that, we're really excited about the idea of bringing the Artist in Residence Program to the future Ecology Center site and have enjoyed the conversations and kind of ideating around what that could look like in the future. So appreciate the opportunity to kind of keep that door open and when the time is right to be able to bring that to the community. So again, just looking forward to the future and being able to work together with Derek and the city to bring that to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other hands raised.
One thing you want to add to the plastic film wrap, if you go to Walmart, they got those green bins there that bag it up and they drop it off. If you look at the signs on front of it, it tells you what you can put in it. I think they want to stress, just make sure it's clean. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'm sure your wife's not going to have you doing any more experience, experiments.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, council.
All right. Next, we'll move on to, whoop, got it up here. Selection of Vice Mayor and City Council Committee Appointments.
Mayor and council. So every year this time, we select the Vice Mayor who's going to serve for the upcoming year. So this will be an appointment that will begin January 1st. And the second part of this is reviewing and approving our city council appointment lists, which we've attached the one that is in use now. So you can review and make any changes that you would like to. I also wanted to bring to your attention that our first appointee on the Eco Center Project Subcommittee is available. Currently, the second appointee is Vice Mayor Washington.
Okay. Vice Mayor Washington?
Yeah. I know it's customary for us to do a rotation for the Vice Mayor position. And I just want to say that I'm not going to step down from the Vice Mayor position. I'm just joking. I've enjoyed it all year long. I really had a blast doing this. But it is our customary. And I'd like to, I'd be honored to nominate David Orol as our 2024 Vice Mayor for the City of American Canyon, if he so accepts.
I'd be willing to second it if he's willing to accept.
Yeah, considering the customary rotation, I accept.
Well, very good. Roll call, please.
Yes, just one moment. Sorry. Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Orol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor still, Pierre Washington?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Duties to be assumed in January. So very good. All right. We look forward to that. Yeah, I think at that time is appropriate for me to thank you for your services, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Washington. And welcome you aboard as Vice Mayor, Councilmember Orol.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, we also have the City Council Committee Appointments. Any changes requested? I, just for, to start the conversation, I am okay with the assignments I have. I will continue.
I'm okay with the assignments I have too. And yeah, that's fine.
I will probably have to create the Finance Committee for.
Yeah, I think that automatically happens. They'll make those changes on the ones that the Vice Mayor duties become.
And I'm happy with the assignments I've got.
Me too.
So is that unanimous? Everybody's okay?
Do we have an interest in our first appointee for Eco Center?
Yeah. And just so, you know, Jason, I thought you might have, might have wanted to address this one because.
Yeah, at this point, I'm hoping that we're going to have the lease, the lease to you probably the second week of February. I don't think the committee is going to need to meet again. So I think unless something changes by February, I'll let you all know. We'll come back and do an appointment. But I think we're okay for now.
Okay.
It's going to stay the way it is?
Correct. Mostly because I envision the committee going away, hopefully.
All right. We can address that at a future council meeting if need be. Anything else that needs to be addressed on this? If not, then I think it would be appropriate motion to approve.
I don't know. Is this something that requires public comment? I mean.
I think public comment is a customary practice. So whether it's legally required, I'm not sure that even matters.
We know it's public comment on this matter?
I don't know why we would stop on this one.
All right. Hearing none? Anything online?
I'll make a motion.
There are no comments online.
I'll make a motion that we continue the appointment list as presented with those exceptions relating to the Vice Mayor's assignments and leaving the Eco Center as is for now.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Orol?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to our agenda, Management Staff Oral Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Director Juan Gomez has an update, as well as Community Development Director Brent Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You don't get a whole lot of updates from Finance, but I have two here. One is last week, we were recently notified that we received our ninth award for our annual comprehensive financial report.
Well, congratulations.
So it takes a lot of work and a lot of hours, in particular, putting all the numbers together and all the documents. It's not an easy read document, but it is something that we have to do. And I want to thank all the departments, the accounting technicians, the administrative technicians in the other departments, and in particular, our finance manager, Gemma Lynn Cruz, who put a lot of hours into putting that. We had a lot of turnover, a lot of new staff. She was really there to put all this together and make it a successful document. Secondly, we are, oh, also, we are wrapping up our fiscal year '23 annual comprehensive financial report. So we should be done with that next week. And we expect to submit that for an award again and get our 10th annual award for that. So early January, the Mayor and newly elected or appointed Vice Mayor will get a sneak peek at our financial numbers at the Finance Committee, and then we'll bring that to council on the 16th of the year in financial reporting for that. Also, we applied for an extension for the State Arrears program. That's to assist those accounts that had debt, accrued debt for utility bills during the period of June 2021 through December of '22. We have about 50 accounts that will be, that will benefit from that program. So we want to make sure we apply for that. So we've submitted that application today. I see no reason why we shouldn't receive those fundings. Just wanted also mention to residents out there that are struggling with their utility bills. We have many programs. We have the LEWAT program. We have the city's Water Rate Assistance Program, which helps with the fixed rate charge if they're on the PG&E care program. They can send us a copy of their PG&E bill, and then we can also apply that Water Rate Assistance Program for them as well. So a couple of things there, just to help everybody out. But other than that, that's all I got for tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, congratulations again. And I'd like to pass on our appreciation and thank you for the work you're doing and all the staff that have been involved. Please, Mr. Holly, please forward that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a really quick comment regarding water?
Yeah.
I just want to put it out there for everybody. My mom and dad are empty nesters. They live by themselves. And their water bill was like $200 a month for no reason. I told my dad, you might want to check for a leak because even when he was out of the country, it was still like $200 a month.
Yeah.
So it turned out to be something as simple as the backyard hose was leaking. As soon as he fixed it, the next month, his bill was down to $85. So just throwing it out there for everybody. If your bill is extremely high, you might want to just walk around your house and see if something is dripping.
Or they can call us. We have the ability to come and look at your meter, and we can come to some of those same conclusions. If we're seeing continual usage like that, as opposed to there being some anomaly with the actual meter itself, we're able to test it. And most often, it is something like you've characterized with it be a toilet or a faucet. So we will be talking about water rates in January at the first of the year. We've got a water rate proposal we're going to bring in forward. So it's a very timely conversation. And a lot of thanks to Juan and his team for the work they're doing on the utility billing side.
I want to try one of those, they had the QR code on those cards they handed out during the drought. Might want to try one of those, uh, they have the QR code on, uh, those cards they handed out during the drought, that you can monitor, uh, remotely your water. That's still available, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director, just wanted to let you know that on Thursday this week, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the design permit for the Eco Center. So we're looking forward to that. And, um, also, yesterday, the city received all the building permit applications for the Oak Hill Apartment Project, uh, known as the Domain. I think they left off the word Shandong, but that's another story. Um, that's two hundred and ninety-one apartment units, so it's a big project for American Canyon. Um, so we have all those applications in, and we're, we're processing those.
Very good, thank you. Very good, okay, anything more from, uh, Management Staff Oral Reports?
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
All right, move on to Mayor Council Comments and then Committee Reports. Uh, Councilmember Joseph, anything you've had to yours?
Yes, it turns out I forgot to mention that, uh, you and I both, uh, met with some representatives from Habitat for Humanity, along with Director Cooper, uh, talking about the possibility of finding some parcels in our community there that can then be developed into, A, affordable housing, and B, homeownership, uh, because of the sweat equity and all that. So I just wanted to make sure that we threw that out there, that it's an exciting program. And I think Mr. Cooper was able to, uh, identify a, a number of parcels that might be of interest to them. And so they should be checking into that, and hopefully, uh, some point in the near future, we could have something exciting to talk about, as it relates to some more additional affordable housing.
Yeah, that was a good meeting, and, uh, thank you for, uh, your reflections on that. You know, we, uh, there is a possibility to engage in that, uh, type of service. So more to come on that, I hope. Uh, Councilmember Abadamos?
I actually had a pretty slow week this week, so I don't have anything, um, to report, but I do want to mention that four out of the five of us attended the League of California Cities webinar on the California Forever Development.
Yeah.
And I am super, super proud of my council. Our first two questions came from Councilmember Oro and then Councilmember Joseph. So it just kind of felt like AC was in the house. So thank you guys for attending.
Thank you for that. Yeah, that was, uh, uh, that's showing up in the paper a lot. And, uh, apparently, uh, uh, let's see, rather, uh, how to describe it nicely, the Vallejo, uh, community meeting on that was, uh, um, yeah.
I, I think, uh, Councilmember Joseph's report covered that pretty well. He said, um, it was, what did you say it was, like, easy compared to other town halls?
Yeah, I mean, as it turns out, elected officials tend to be polite, given the opportu- well, I guess sometimes, but, yeah, it, it wasn't really contentious.
It was, that's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah.
They had, they, the council, in fact, recessed to clear the audience, uh, so, yeah, it's a challenging process. Okay, uh, Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, regarding that California Forever meeting, I actually was kind of disappointed that there weren't more pressing questions on it. I think Mark and I had the most substantive questions on that one. Uh, so, yeah, attended that California Cities event, and I tried to get my report in, and I had it on my calendar, and got distracted, didn't do anything. Did attend the Visit Napa Valley Board Meeting. Um, nothing major to report there, you know, I mean, I think we're still highest in terms of, you know, tourism and, and, um, room rates in California, we've recovered the most and the best. Average daily room rates are coming down from their peaks in twenty twenty-two, uh, but, um, you know, overall, still a good year. Fortunately, Mark and I, uh, went today, and I'll share this with you guys, we went to the opening, uh, the unveiling of the twenty twenty-four Official Visitors' Guide magazine that, uh, Visit Napa Valley puts together. What did she say? There were six hundred thousand of these that go out? No, six hundred thousand of these that go out to places across the country, and you'll find them everywhere, local hotels. There's a couple in the back, if you want to take one home. American Canyon is featured on page forty-seven. Uh, this is really, um, I think, uh, the CEO said that when visitors come, they always love a visitors' guide. And this one's three hundred pages, a hundred and seventy-six pages long, and it's pretty well done, and it lasts for a year. As a local, it helps me find out what else is going on, and then I never go to anything, so. But it's still there, so just, those were my big updates for y'all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Washington?
Uh, yeah, I probably should have said it earlier when, um, Dr. Tennyson was here, Sherri Tennyson was here. I actually participated with her, uh, for the Toys for Tots on Saturday. And, you know, giving props to all the, the groups that supported it. Uh, there were a lot of residents that were out there as well, um, handing out gifts, uh, which was really nice. And, and what I really enjoyed was the kids from the high school and the middle school and the elementary school being part of giving those toys away. Uh, I got a chance to see kids wanting to make sure other kids get gifts, which was really warming to the heart. Um, I liked the fire department allowing them to use their facility, to be able to provide that information or that, those, those toys out. So just wanted to say a shout out to, to Sherri for, for always doing that. I know Councilmember, um, Abadamos was with me last year, where we did it. It's just a warming event, and, um, I just want to give some props out to the police department, too. You know, when everybody will be out there in their homes in Christmas and New Years, they'll still be out there, so keep them in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I had a number of events that's, uh, mostly, uh, celebrations. The high school choir, they're awesome, they just, uh, they attended their, uh, choir concert, uh, for, uh, the holidays. Of course, the, uh, other organizations, like, for example, Cabanas, uh, had our holiday, holiday dinner gathering for the members. And, uh, also, thank you, uh, Councilmember Joseph, for, uh, we got a tour of the, the new pantry location, and for that, also for the Arts Foundation, American Canyon Arts Foundation. So good to see, uh, things moving forward. I think there's gonna be a lot more interest generated in, uh, the old Napa Junction School, as people have more, uh, awareness of what's available there. Uh, we had the, uh, from the Fire District side, we had the Finance Committee meeting. Vice Mayor Washington and I attended that. Uh, we seem to be in good stead financially going forward, that's always good to know. About many holiday, holiday celebrations around town. It's at that time of year where people gather up, and rightly so. And, uh, drive around it in the evening, and you see all the, the houses decorated with the lights on, and go, wow, it's impressive. So I know they do a tour every year of that. And that would conclude my report. Future agenda items? Anybody?
I have none.
Next year, for future agenda items? Excuse me. Okay. Well, that being said, let me, uh, get myself prepared here. We have our annual, uh, adjournment to Christmas carols.
Before we adjourn, Mayor, just a note, uh, we, uh, will be meeting again on January sixteenth, uh, as our next City Council meeting.
All right. Everybody got their Santa hat? Here we go. Well, yeah, absolutely, except, uh, my voice is not tuned into it tonight. All right. Everybody ready? All right. Are we, are we ready for Santa? Oh, okay, yeah, all right. Where's Jarns? All right. We're ready for Santa?
Yes, Santa Claus.
We're gonna do jingle bells.
Jingle bells.